I wasn't here for the original original source. It was the most recent conversation about the amendment. Like that this.
Back in front of it for the amendment, then it becomes you can go down it anyway.
Yeah, they became they're coming back.
Well, she's gonna look it up right now.
What are you looking up? Cause it's not in our bylaws.
I remember Tammy saying something about.
But I think we'll have enough time, but let's look up, let's look into it. Yeah, I think. Before we begin.
Yeah, I can hear you.
So tonight, yeah, okay. All right. Well, why don't we begin? Good evening, everybody. I'm going to ask for those that are willing and able to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, like welcome everybody to the regular planning board meeting of Wednesday, December 7, 2022. I'd like to look immediately to my right and welcome to Christine Prue, the A. Christine is here, has agreed to serve on the planning board. So Christine, thank you very much. Well, thank you very much for taking on the role of an alternate tonight. Because let's see, one, two, three, four, we will designate you as a voting member tonight. However, when we do vote on a couple of these items, we'll ask that you do abstain until we get to the San Villa Estates one, because those other ones you weren't here for those prior. So being said, I have to welcome Christine. Actually, let's go back and just ask for approval of the meeting minutes. Do I have a motion under November 16, 2022 meeting minutes?
I make a motion.
Zach has moved the minutes. And we weren't here. So Bill, you were here at the last meeting. You care to make a second to that motion to approve the minutes?
Sorry about that. I was, I reviewed them and I seconded the motion.
Thank you very much. So because you are online tonight, we're going to do this little call. So I'm going to start with you, Bill.
Hi.
Hi, Zach.
Hi.
And Greg, did I, does the record reflect that or she was abstained from that? Okay, all right. So that's approved. Boy, I'm actually got ahead of myself here. So why don't we go back and ask, is there any comment from the public? I'll start up in the world of Zoom. If there are any, anybody attending via Zoom that has a comment they'd like to make to the planning board, please raise your hand. Seeing none, is there anybody here sitting before us? Seeing none, we'll move on. And at this point, I'd like to recognize our town manager, Tim Pellerin, who has some items he'd like to discuss with us.
Sir, or yours. Two things I've come to you tonight. So the first is I want to advise the planning board of a staff change. The town planner, who was Tammy, who was had been hired as a town planner, has left her position and has moved on. So that position is now vacant. In the interim, I appointed Jenny as both CEO and planner, and the assistant will be Amy. So if you have any issues, work through them, they'll be helping you till we figure out path for going with that next. We have reached out to SMPDC and they'll be giving us plan and review support on anything we need if we need it. So we're comfortable right now. We've got a staff joint meeting with these folks. Myself, we're comfortable going forward for the next month or two to see, you know, any, any other issues we're going to do. And we reached out to Lee J and talked to him. So at SMPDC, so we feel we're in good shape.
Yes. Okay, just asked him. So if something comes in that needs review, would it'll go out to them for like David Gailbraith will come back to review.
David's not working with them anymore.
Oh, he's not. Oh, I didn't know that. Sorry. But somebody from there will like.
Hannah, there's a new girl Hannah, who's a plans review engineer who's been assigned to us.
A new woman there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's good to hear that, you know, from a technical review and observation and helping us through the process. I think it's critical that we have that level of review assistance.
And I've explained to Jenny and Amy both that anytime it's at their level, that they're not comfortable with anything, send it out of house and to contact our communication reward chair and say, this is what we're going to do with it. This is why. So we're all on the same page. I think it's, you know, we'll plot forward and see where that takes us.
Yeah, we'll do one, one application at a time. We'll kind of assess it one thing at a time. Now, that's not going to be considered for our purposes, the third party review. I just because I know we used SMPDC for their third party review. That's not going to compromise working with them. Okay, so it's going to be similar to what we used to do in the past.
Yeah.
They, and they will come and help with whatever we need here until you get back to where we want to get to.
Or. And can I ask, so there is a plan to hire a new one?
I, Duke, I can't say, I don't know that.
We don't know yet.
I haven't got any file then. Staff change.
Okay.
That this week.
Fair enough.
Next, the assistant down edge is on vacation. And I've asked them to these folks to research a bunch of information of the last year on projects and how much we do for plans review. There's factors going forward, LD 2003. It has, we'll have to get molded and amended into land use ordinance. So that'll take time and effort. And all those things will weigh into staff considerations as well as budgets and monies and so forth.
Can I ask, maybe this is an odd question, but was there an exit interview or will there?
Personnel, I can't discuss it.
That's just a policy issue then.
That, yeah, it's, there wasn't.
Fair enough. Thank you.
So. That's that. Recently, at the town council level, after we had some issues bubble up on all boards and have to consultation with council, I. Um, and have to consultation with council, like legal counsel, myself, talk to the town council, we all agree that they should institute mandatory training for all the boards. It's not fear that we bring someone, I'll pick on Christine for a second. Bring someone on new with the expectation, here, here you go. Here's our land use ordinance, the ongoing ordinance. We expect you to know all this stuff, to come and make educated decisions on the public, who in their particular case may involve their life decisions. And we offer you no training. So it's twofold. It doesn't present a good honest face to the public that we're doing our job right. Number one, number two, liability issue. So with that said, we looked through. I'm now with town council, I made some recommendations. They adopted an administrative policy on training. It's very, very simple. It simply says that it's you'll take the MMA training. That's all. There's no, there's no time limit on it. There's no there's no, uh, not out.
Is that different from the upcoming zoom?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll say back it.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, if there's any more beyond that.
Thank you.
Can take that.
So, you know, we didn't want to make it intrusive to the, to the point that yeah, we, we didn't want to make it intrusive to the fact that it's going to take up hours and hours of time. So just the MMA training, which they offer three, four times a year. And I think after January, they'll have it online. You can go on and watch it. I think. Um, the other part of this is with all new planning board members and town council members is a orientation by myself where they come in and we take a few minutes, go through the handbook, through the charter, the codes. And kind of review that. This is, it's the, the second page is the webinar, where you have to do it. Tell you what it is. Um, along with this is, we ran into this is the standard of conduct from the town code and charter. Um, that the work rules apply to all employees. Municipal officials, which is what you are. And that's, it's just reference. This is just reference material. So that's, this is what my orientation would be. It's just up for you to read. Um, and then there's a page in the back. Once you do read it is to acknowledge it. And sometimes give that back to Jenny or Amy to put in a file.
Um, sign it.
What's that?
Is there an acknowledgement?
Yeah.
Very good.
Just so that we have something that we can put in the file that. Um. If somebody says, oh, I didn't know that rule existed. You know, we saw the town rules, the codes, the charters, they exist. Very simple. It's nothing, you know, nothing, um. For a charter.
Sure. So if the board members can kind of look at this between now and the next meeting and we can all just kind of work together and sign off.
It's just, I just make it more, just more efficient and more aware of the policies. It came after, you know, we've had several bumps in the road where people weren't aware of policy, the procedures and this just makes it that. And if certainly there's any questions, you have any, you know, just call my office or talk to Jenny and so forth. But it's very, very relaxed, just an opportunity for us to make sure we cross our teeth and thought our thoughts.
That all right. Yeah. Straightforward. They are be required to have a planning board to that annual follow training.
Well, you, yeah, that was, so yes, you are. But you get it when you, when you get elected, Don will send you. So like Don will.
We already took it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you already took it.
Yeah.
So and that's just the one time. Once you're on the board, you get it. Freedom of access information.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I mean, I remember taking a quiz, but I remember having a training was the.
That's the training, the quiz.
Gotcha.
The training, because they try to keep it simple.
I got you. I did look up what I got.
Yeah, so that's all we do for that. That's right. That qualifies. So we'll get that. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Does, does anybody have any follow up questions for the town meeting before I go to staff?
And this applies both to the council, the planning board, and the zoning board. Not a.
Thank you.
Blanket is a profit.
Great.
Perfectly reasonable.
Yeah.
Jenny?
So to be transparent, I asked Lee J, I have him on text, the question that we were talking about on who can vote on certain things tonight. And Hershey and Christine cannot. Okay. And I can explain more.
As long as we have that and just moving forward, you can just better understand.
That's what we just, yeah.
Yeah. Very helpful. Yeah, very helpful to have that, that we know for sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions you mean, Mr. Jen?
And I'll reiterate, any members of the board have any further follow up questions, questions, concerns, concerns? I'm good.
Well, thank you for your service to the town. We appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too, Tim. Thank you. All right. So moving on, Bill, well, this, the next three items do involve you on this. This is the findings of fact for some prior, prior approved and uh, major site plan. So again, so by way of background, at the last meeting, we heard from Easy Street Properties. And at that meeting, the board did approve the application. And we did have, we have a set of conditions on that. In our packets of information, we should have that complete document. Uh, that document was sent to us prior to the meeting. I hope everybody had an opportunity to read it. I looked at it. I don't see any issues. And so the question before the board tonight would be to authorize the findings of fact and is it signed by me or yes, signed by me? So.
That's the official copy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's two for you.
Yep.
And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And to sign is also on the table for your.
Yeah.
Staff.
Yeah.
The board.
And so is there a motion to approve the finding of fa- findings of fact as presented? And that would need to come from Zach or Bill. Motion. Zach, Zach has made that motion. Do we have a second on that, Bill?
Yeah, I'll second.
Moved and seconded. And again, because we're on Zoom, we'll do a roll call. Bill Cole.
I.
Zach.
I.
And Greg says, I, motions approved.
Wait, you're even asking if I get to abstain?
Oh, and.
Wow.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Let's go back and. We'll go back and ask for, and let the record note that Hershey will be abstaining from the vote. And, 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 and Chris will not be voting on that.
Correct.
Will be, so I'll go ahead and, and then Zach, you and I need to go sign that, but we can just do that at the end.
All right.
Because I don't think anyone is here waiting for it at this point.
Okay. I have a question. Do I need to sign that as well?
Yes. Yeah, you're going to have to find five, 10 minutes, Bill, and that, you know, when things work its way out.
Okay.
Uh, come in and sign that. When, any idea? Need a week or so?
Um. Amy, will you be available for me to come in tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll try to make it happen tomorrow.
Text, just call or send me an email.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Next up on the agenda is the approval, finding the fact for M S P twenty-one zero zero two site plan amendment regarding A T and T second South Berwick Water District. This notes the even size of the fenced in area that we discussed last week. Is there a motion on those findings of fact as presented?
So moved.
And move, do I have a second?
Second.
And moved and seconded. I'll, I'll do a roll call vote. Bill Cole.
I.
Zach.
I.
And Greg is I. And do we have any abstentions?
I abstain.
Okay. Please.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is going to be approval of finding the fact for M S P two zero dash zero one zero site plan amendment. Hexagon Solar, over Knights Pond, four megawatt solar array on Junction Road. Uh, at the last meeting, they came in and presented a few issues to us. And the board at the time approved that. And again, contingent on the findings of fact as presented. Yeah, and that was really to account for, I think, a kind of a road layout change as well as a pad, a new pad that needed to be installed. So is there a findings? Do I have a motion on M S P amendment twenty dash zero one zero?
So moved.
Move? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll follow a vote on that. Bill Cole.
I.
Zach.
I.
And Greg is I. Do I have any abstentions?
I abstain.
Thank you very much. Motion carries.
That's a question about that. Conditions we're going to ask on that one. It, it now starts, is the clock running from today's date or from the original application date?
This is for.
Hexa, for Hexagon. So F is the first site work for use is not commencing within one year. No, I just, I, I just remember when we passed it, there were conditions approved. Uh, no, actually, no, there isn't. No, we did a sidewalk. That was one I directed, right?
Yeah.
No. Just, I'm just curious, please.
Okay, all right. Next item under all business, we're here to hear again from M S B twenty-two zero zero three. This is regarding Sandville Estates. You may remember this as it's a subdivision and expansion due off of the existing Metal Pond Road area. We heard from these individuals that my understanding is this application goes back quite a ways. And then we reheard it because of a time elapsing issue. We reheard it as a planning board back in May of twenty twenty-two. Uh, and at that time, I believe it was just an initial sketch plan review. There were some questions, comments, concerns, a back and forth conversation. Conversation around other permitting, conversations about meeting with the town of Berwick. I know I, I said that. Uh, there was also some conversation regarding conventional subdivision versus clustered subdivision. Uh, and then, you know, uh, I did not go back and read the minutes, but I do know there was some other conversation that occurred. So I'm assuming, sir, you are here to talk with us tonight.
I am.
And kind of continue with the sketch plan review of Sandville Estates, M S P twenty-two zero zero three. So I'll invite you up before I turn the floor over to you. Are there any um, any comments, questions, concerns from the board before we start? Any comments, questions, concerns? Oh, sure.
Is this the full material that had been submitted to date or just an addendum to what has already provided? Because I wasn't there for the original.
Sure. So I'm going to hand it over to town staff and perhaps they can answer that question.
That is everything that we have on our project right now for phase three. There's been a previous phase one and phase two that have been approved on this project. This is phase three. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ken Wood from Etter Engineering in Elliott. Couple of my staff members have been before you in, in the past, Brian Nielsen and Liam Cullen. You're stuck with him tonight. Uh, this is an expansion of an existing clustered subdivision, phase one and phase two, uh, contain AP lots that are up metal pond estates. Those have been approved by this board years ago. They've been built. Um, this plan proposes an additional thirty-five lots. The board actually approved the sketch plan that we had in front of you back on September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And we were moving to preliminary plan. And there was some questions on right title and interest of the applicant, Nick Lee and Development to pass all the industry drive and metal pond road. Both of those roads were constructed by the applicant, but by the time we straightened the deeds out, we are sketch plan approval had lapsed. So that's what brings us back to sketch plan approval now. The sketch plan you approved, that I have it here, I can show it to you, contained thirty-seven lots. Now we have thirty-five lots. Um, we have, and I think you have this material in our past submittals from last May. We have reviews by I F N W for black races, New England's Ottingtail and spotted, uh, spotted turtles. Um, and blaming turtles and those have all been resolved. Um, we had also worked with David Galbraith because your ordinance requires that we more or less present a yield plan to you, a conventional subdivision plan that has thirty-five lots. That's what the yield is with a conventional subdivision plan and a clustered subdivision, a clustered subdivision plan. Originally, we had come before this board and we had asked for a few waivers. The board had traditionally granted waivers on the six hundred foot hell of a sack length. You did that with a cast subdivision of two thirty-six. The board, um, didn't grant us that waiver. So David Galbraith suggested that we present a conventional subdivision plan for you as a yield plan with thirty-five lots without requesting any waivers. I believe you have that in your package. I can run through that with you. And we also had addressed traffic through Soul Company. Diane Maravito did a traffic analysis. And we had gone above and beyond that and presented a letter from Michael Morris, who used to be the surely and co- zoning coordinator for Main T E B or X Fire Capelago now with his review and comments on the conventional subdivision. The conventional subdivision resent, uh, resulted in about twenty-eight thousand square feet of wetland impact. With the clustered subdivision, our preferred subdivision design results in about nineteen thousand square feet, less than that, about eight thousand square. My clients would like the board to consider sketch plan approval for the clustered subdivision. It's the same type of design previous boards had approved for phase one and phase two of Metal Pond Estates. Uh, the zoning, your zoning for a conventional requires eighty thousand square feet, two acres. Uh, neither metal pond, one a metal pond to have that. They were approved and built and successfully developed as a cluster. So what I would like is the board to consider my cluster subdivision design tonight and approve the sketch plan and move on. I had met with Jen and Jen had also suggested that the board, I believe, act on sending a letter to the town of Berwick for a joint meeting. So I will do whatever the board likes. I would like you to consider my sketch plan. We have been before the board since Tuesday, August of two thousand and nineteen. As Jen said, it has dragged on for a little while. Um, mostly on us, but partly on the board requesting other information. And remember, we're only a sketch. You know, and your ordinance requires that a sketch can be freehand, and we would like to move to preliminary plan design. So hopefully you will see the logic in my sketch plan, see the logic in my conventional plan yields and ask me any questions you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
So part of the, one of the first questions I have, going back to the first meeting, or the, the May meeting. Uh, we did have that conversation, conventional versus clustered. And I seem to recall you, at the time, you or your associate were really asking for wanting to go to the clustered subdivision. Uh, so you could net more house lots.
No, I know, no, both. We, we've done a high intensity source early. We've located the wetlands. Both plans, the total yield is thirty-five lots. So I don't believe if someone mentioned that, I'd apologize for that. But we would never go, we would never ask a town that doesn't have a. But we would never go, we would never ask a town that doesn't have a cluster housing bonus to approve more lots than the conventional subdivision could provide. And then all the plans I reviewed, they've been the same.
So, and like, I'm gonna follow that up because I have to say, I'm a little dim at this point, but I don't actually remember us reviewing the conventional, like, part of the criticism is we hadn't reviewed the conventional plan and approved it prior to then jumping to the cluster plan. And, and that the, and that we didn't really ascertain if the conventional plan, and I could be wrong here, met all requirements. It, and you know, you could put thirty seven lots down maybe, but you know, were you in violation according to, you know, fishing wildlife, were you, or, you know, were stepping around wetlands? Was, I mean, it has to, it has to be legit completely before then we can approve the same number of lots. And that determines your number of lots and that has to be legitimate before we move on. And to tell you the truth, I remember there being a lot of discussion around that and I don't remember approving.
That's where I got the night, that's where the nineteen six of why they wanted to move to the cluster to get the higher, the higher density.
Right.
That, that was, that was my recollection. But however, when it gets to that question, I do think if you look at our ordinance, I know there's been some questions about this. We may want to seek some clarification on that. Is, I think they would submit both the clustered and the conventional. But in no instances shall the cluster be more than what would be allowed by the
Right.
conventional.
Right.
I don't think it says we approve it conventional first and then we can move. I think all the references in, in the zoning ordinance is they submit both. And they're just simply, you, you, you can't, if, if your traditional says ten, you can't go to your cluster and then third.
I know they have to. Right, but, but the ten that are tradition, in the traditional one, it has to meet all of the requirements in order for each of those to.
I don't necessarily know if that's what it's, I think you can do clustered or traditional. And you don't have to do one before the other. You can grant the.
No, no.
Honor.
Right, but, but.
And then it has to meet all of the requirements depending on what path we choose.
Right, but the, the cluster, the cluster takes the number it's allowed from a conventional plan. And that means traditional plan has to legitimately meet the requirements before, so with another project, the one out, out, that was, what was the one, not Bennett Road? What was the one out near Dunkin Road? That we struggled with? It was the same. If, no, what?
Mountain Road?
Yeah, Matt, no. Not the, not Mountain Road where the guy had all the nice colors. It was, but it was, it was near one of the great works, Land Trust Heights.
Right near Road?
No, sorry, I can't remember which one. All I remember is that.
Bennett Lot Road.
Bennett, it was, it was, but it was that.
It was Bennett.
You have to have, they have to be sort of like vetted and maybe provide before you can say, yes, that's the number to get your.
I'd agree with that. Yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent. And then, I know, I, I, I stay real.
Right, so, and, and I think we got some outside criticism where people here at the meeting, I remember, especially saying you're jumping to the cluster without really, you know, properly vetting. And I, I don't mean we have to go crazy or, you know, spend a lot of money on this kind of stuff, but the, the, you know, you can't just plunk them down.
I agree. And all along, we've taken that approach. And on September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, your ministry, Mr. Straw, made a motion to accept the sketch plan as is, and the board provided input to the applicant about the context with the various committees that are outlined in the cluster. Including the conservation commission, and we look forward to evaluating the rest of the project. It was approved with a full as a vote that you accepted the sketch plan back on September eighteenth, two thousand nineteen.
For the traditional plan or a cluster plan?
Cluster. Because we had always provided both plans.
Right.
We've always, that's always, always done the cluster and so.
Right.
You know, and we, I don't believe we would ever ask for more lots with a cluster.
No, no, I, you can't. That I get, but it's based on the fact that the traditional ones have to be, have to work.
Right, and we've submitted a traditional plan, but works without requesting any waivers.
So there's no wetland impingement? There's no problem with?
Well, there's wetland impacts, but.
So if we factor all of that in, does that have any impact on the traditional?
Well, that would depend how you factor it in, Mr. Chairman. Would you, would you come to me and say, my ordinance doesn't allow any wetland impacts? I don't think your ordinance says that.
I think it allows some, but not, you know, depends on how much.
Okay. And that's why you have a letter in your package from Michael Morris addressing wetland impacts. Which.
On your traditional plan.
On the traditional.
So you're, you're telling us that your traditional plan meets all of the requirements of our zoning code, period?
Yes.
Okay.
And it provides thirty five lot, the same as the cluster.
It's less impact.
And a cluster is less impact than the traditional plan. Yeah, I, yeah. Close, I think you stated that.
I think there's benefits to it.
Absolutely.
Myself, absolutely.
Well, of course, the benefits are more open space.
Yeah.
Of course, opportunities with the great ticket program, less roads, less utilities. And the lots are similar to the lots in phase one and phase two of Meadow Pond Estates.
Okay, I, not to, not to be disingenuous, no offense to you, but you also save a lot of money doing it that way. So let's be clear that developers prefer cluster development because they're not altruistic. Often it just is less money for, for you, for the developer.
Of course, but. Yeah, of course, your lot sales are less too, because somebody's purchasing a smaller lot. It depends. I mean,
I'm, I'm just.
You know, I mean, most towns would, would prefer a clustered subdivision design because there's more open space and as I said, less road and less utilities.
It's just that, that ignoring that fact, it doesn't acknowledge the tension and often exists around whether they have a cluster or not, I guess.
Where's the tension, hers?
Well, that, that developers often want to do it because it saves.
Of course it does. I, I agree with that.
Yeah, and it's not that there aren't great benefits to it.
Right. And in this case, I have eighteen lots here in phase one and phase two that my client developed on land they own. They constructed the roads, they sold them, and it was a successful development. So of course,
Sure.
you know, why wouldn't they want to carry on with the same theme in phase three?
I have a question. Does, does the lot size minimums differ between a cluster and a conventional?
Yes.
So what, how much so?
In Berwick, in South Berwick, you're in a two acre zone, lot sizes, minimum lot size after the twenty thousand square feet of greater.
Okay.
The main state subsurface code onsite waste water, so you cannot go the world of two, follow a twenty thousand square minimum. So what happens is if you're in a two acre zone, you, as Hershey has said too, you figure your yield based on the land available that's suitable for development by your ordinance. You come up with a number of lots, in this case, it's thirty five. With the cluster development, you can reduce the lot size down to twenty thousand square feet. These lot sizes are similar to phase one and phase two. And so you have less roads, less utilities, and the remainder of the land is an open space. So it's conserved.
Yeah.
So smaller lots, but you don't get any more lots than you could with a conventional subdivision.
In two thousand nineteen, it was thirty seven?
It was.
Why is it?
We didn't have a high intensity soil, so you, your ordinance doesn't require one for sketch plan, maybe. Went and did a high intensity soil survey, and we also received the comments from IFNW. And the yield is thirty five. That's the maximum number of lots when you subtract out. You know, your ordinance requires subtracting out somewhat poorly drained and poorly drained. We had the wetlands done with the first sketch plan. Of course, all wetlands, hydro soils, they're poorly drained soils, those come right out. But the somewhat poorly drained is what drove the thirty five lots.
Can I ask, because I, I have to say, I'm still a little on. So in two thousand nineteen, it was approved.
The sketch plan.
Right, the sketch plan was approved, but, but then some time lapse, no?
Right.
It did. Right, so doesn't that basically put you back at square one and you came back?
A sketch, which is why we're here.
Right.
Otherwise, I would have gone to.
So, okay, so let me just ask, is the sketch plan you would have submitted for a traditional, the traditional plan, thank you, subdivision? Is that the same exact one that you are, you submitted again with the subsequent?
No.
Second application?
No, because the sketch plan, we, the conventional subdivision plan that we submitted to this board in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, in August and September, had waivers requested for road length. Your ordinance limits cul-de-sac length to six hundred feet.
Right.
You waived that in the past, and there were several subdivisions in South Berwick with cul-de-sacs longer than six hundred feet. When we went back to sketch plan, because we, our sketch plan approval lapsed
Right.
in May of this year, the board didn't feel comfortable with a conventional subdivision plan, so we redesigned it without any waivers. The other one, Hershey, for example, had.
So, okay, so wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we haven't actually approved the traditional plan, the second one you submitted. We, that one was approved in two thousand nineteen. It left, it went away. You resubmitted last spring.
Right.
There were some questions about traditional plan. We didn't give you the road waiver. So we haven't actually approved the traditional plan in order to move on to the cluster plan.
That's why we're back a sketch. You're right.
Okay.
Which is why we submitted this traditional subdivision, conventional subdivision plan without requiring any waivers.
Okay.
You're in a better position.
I, I got you. I just, I just want to once again make sure we do our due diligence.
I understand.
Discussing the traditional plan before, once again, assuming we're going to move on to the cluster plan, even though it might be everybody's assumption. We haven't actually looked at it and approved it, and then we got criticism for that, and I think that was fair. So I just, I want to make sure we review whatever we need to.
Right, and I, I'm taking you back three. I'm taking, asking you to go back to two thousand nineteen.
Right, but it's a different plan, it sounds like.
The conventional plan's a different plan. The subdivision is similar, minus two lots.
Okay.
It's the same, plus the subdivision plan is the same plan you approved in two thousand nineteen as a sketch.
Right.
Minus two lots.
Okay.
And I can show you where those two lots are, whenever, whenever you prefer.
So I'm saying.
I do see what you're saying.
Additional material.
So.
That was asked for in April, now they have it.
Okay, that's fine. That, that's cool. I just want to make sure we review whatever we ask.
Back in the, in the May, it was clustered, the traditional back and forth. And now it sounds like we're on to the, you're going forward, you, you're asking to go forward with, you just pointed to that and said, traditional or conventional? Without any waivers. So you're asking for a conventional subdivision. That's when you pointed it down and said.
Well, I know, well, what I said, Mr. Chairman, I hope fully wise. This is the conventional subdivision plan designed without requiring any waivers for your zoning ordinance. What I'm really asking you to do, and it's up to the board to see if they can get to that point. Because I believe by your sketch plan procedure, we have to submit a conventional lot subdivision design and a cluster subdivision design. Ultimately, what I'd like to do is when I come back, hopefully to you with a preliminary plan submittal, it's the cluster plan. So I don't want you to, I don't want you to say, all right, Ken, you're good. Come back with a conventional plan design. I'd rather you approve my cluster subdivision design in going forward to its preliminary plan submittal.
To bringing to us today conventional plan that we can compare to something you've already done in the past, but this conventional plan is enhanced by not requiring any waiver.
That's right, because your ordinance reply is pretty much a yield plan, that the board reviews both plans before they guide the applicant in going forward.
Then, okay, so then I think we cleared that up. Can you then walk us through the conventional?
Sure.
Thank you. Is that, is that cool?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this, I, and I believe you have this in your supplemental materials.
Yep.
So we've done the net density calculations. We've subtracted the unsuitable soils in our notes, and that's suggested by David Galbreit. It was the conventional and clustered sketch plan. We've given you the yield. Hundred seventy five, hundred seventy four acres, taken up the soils. The net maximum density is thirty five lots. That's the most lots that any developer could put on this parcel, given its size and its deductions. Root floor is up here. Meadow Pond. Estates phase one and phase two is here. There was always a expansion proposed for those subdivisions. That's why there was a fifty foot right away coming through. We've used similar lot sizes, similar road design, twenty four feet of pavement, five foot sidewalk curved. And we have two loop roads, not requiring any waivers. There's no waiver in your road radius requirements or any cul-de-sac length.
But there is a, there is a fire department requirement, right?
But two means of access.
For radiuses of roads.
Yeah, that, well, this meets that. This would be your ordinance.
Okay.
I think, I think you're three hundred feet sideline. And we've shown thirty five conventional lots. Conventional subdivision. Two acre lots.
Okay, wait, before you move on.
Yeah.
So what is the wetland impact?
Twenty eight thousand square feet.
That's it?
That's it. It's on the plan. It's a tier two NERC permit.
Okay.
Small print.
Right.
I'm sorry, it's been in the mess.
It's not that, it's, we're used to getting a full set of plans to review and I just.
We actually have a full set if you guys know.
I don't think. Jen.
Oh, thanks, Jen. I, I look kind of my old ones, to tell you the truth, and I think I. Thank you.
Yep, anyone else?
It's no six.
But there we go.
Yeah, there's probably.
I'm good.
I'm just gonna give it to him. Let him see what he.
Right ahead.
Okay.
Have you had any conversations with the town of Berwick at all? Because it was conversation in their last meeting about the industry drive.
We haven't. I believe Jen has a letter.
Yeah, right, we, we need to involve them.
That's fine.
Yeah. Whether they want to do anything with it, it's their issue, but.
I understand. I understand.
Is, I'm sorry, is the, um, the grade in wetlands that just pointed out, is that, are those the ones that are the ones impacted by, I assume?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
The, they're some of the.
Of the twenty eight thousand that you mentioned, wetlands affected, or in this plan, are the grade areas?
You mean, do we, do we incorporate the grades for the roads and that impact?
No. Are those the areas that are the wetland impacting?
That the twenty eight thousand.
Yes.
Are called out.
See, you see the shaded area. Yeah, they're all for road crossings. All those add up to twenty eight thousand.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yes.
And, and can I ask you, they're actually doing the building, right? Mid-construction, they're actually gonna build.
They would do the development. I don't know if they would build the houses. I doubt they would build the houses. They would. They would do the site.
Can I ask for places where there are, for instance, there's a, on lot twenty five right here in this little, sorry, just to the right of the water district pad.
Yeah.
It, there's a setback in the house's position, but I mean, what, what makes, I, I assume they're gonna will have compliance around setbacks that.
Well, yeah, every lot has an acceptable wastewater system design.
Okay.
Demonstrated that with test pits.
Are you, sorry, do you have a, is there a plan for where, oh, it's going on public, public waters or no?
Public water, private sewer. Test pits on each lot.
Gotcha. So, um, is there a, a plan where those are located to ensure you were gonna?
Yes.
Where is it? Which, sorry, please, point me toward you.
So in the full set of plans.
Yeah, I believe there's a grading and utility set. Yeah, you know the number of it.
I will.
It's a two point two, it looks like.
Yeah.
And also two point one, yeah.
Okay, I got you. Fabulous.
So because we originally, back in two thousand and nineteen, were moving to preliminary plan after this board approved the sketch plan. The setup plans in front of you, of course, is much more detailed than a sketch plan.
Yeah.
Right, that, that is the preliminary plan aggregation. So it shows, we've done the Bullstom Auto Design with HydroCAD, we've shown there's no peak increase, we've done road plan and profiles. And we show where the acceptable test pits are and the building and what's in location for the.
Okay, thank you.
But it's still submitted as a sketch plan.
It is because us original sketch plan approval lapsed, right, because we didn't provide you a timely right title and interest for the roads. So that's why you're back in sketch. If I was here three years ago, I would have been front of you with a plumber.
Here. And these.
It's the cloud, it's that they've changed the plan of the, they've changed. Yes. Okay. Okay, yeah.
Is this document two, one, no part of the? Document two, one, no part of the conventional or the.
The only thing we provided you for the conventional is the subdivision plan, the first sheet, we call that a yield.
That, we can see where it would be affected if we had gone with the conventional versus the last year, which we have far more detail around it.
I mean, in others, in other subdivisions we've done in Burwick, South Burwick, and I think your ordinance only requires a sketch plan with a yield plan, it's both conventional and cluster. I don't think your ordinance requires us to provide a full set of preliminary plans, okay, thank you.
No, you're right. And so, where is one L? So this is the, the next page here. Document one L, that's the clustered. So you can see the difference there. I think they all are, they're all just clustered.
Other than this one, we're all. Other than, that's right, other than one city.
Right.
All the plans you're looking at are clustered.
Okay.
So, the overall subdivision plan. One L. That's the nature of it, right. One else built near a conventional.
I have a question, it has, it's my son.
There are no law questions.
When did this, when did the South Borough Water District sign off on providing water for thirty-four units to this? Or happen, so they, you, they, you talk.
I've spoken to John Lee a couple times, I don't, I don't think water capacity is an issue, but I will check if we have a letter of capacity, remember, we're only at sketch.
Yeah, yeah. I was just wondering.
We would require that as part of.
Yes.
They may already have.
John Lee just had the plan, I don't think that would be an issue, but I don't, I'm not sure that we provided you a letter yet.
So, just for a little, um, education, um, police, fire, public works. Water, if a subdivision comes in on town to work, those are all letters that need to be submitted by those, uh, respected departments at preliminary.
At the, so not in the sketch.
No. Yeah.
They're just looking to know ahead on.
Which direction we send it.
Because this is the procedure, I didn't make.
So, and another question is, um, at last year, last May, I guess it was, or April.
Yeah.
The homeowner association from the other phases came in to weigh in, have they been notified that you're back in front of us now?
Not until after today.
So it'll be notified at the next, okay.
And they, and they're very well, the owners will be notified, but phase one and phase two has nothing to do with this state.
Well, I, one, one of their concerns, I think, and their major concern was that people would be traveling down their road. And though there's some discussion about there always being a planned phase three, no one found any indication, and the homeowner seemed a little surprised about it.
Well, there was always a fifty-foot right-of-way at the end of the.
I understand. I, I got you, but they had concerns about it.
We had no plan about us in the past.
Did we provide notification the last time they were, what caused them to?
Uh, May.
So we did that during this, the initial sketch.
They came to, yeah, and we had, um, we had a letter here for both meetings.
Yeah. That's, yes.
Mr. Chair, for educational purposes of it. Um, so if you guys were to approve the sketch plan and move forward, um, you guys could schedule a sidewalk if you want to look at the property. And a public hearing would definitely need to be scheduled again on behalf of this application. Um, because the road on the second form, maybe you guys are coming off of Berwick Road, they would also be able to, if they wanted to, hold a public hearing at the same time. Um, that's with the letter sports to invite them to our board if they want to. Okay, so.
Yeah, so, we'd have to move it within thirty days, I think we're required to have a public hearing, so we would want to set that up for the first meeting in January.
If they decide they just want to sign on, instead of, to hold all of that, can that happen?
Absolutely, and they're probably, they, they could.
But they, so if they did that, then there would be no need for a public hearing with, with them combined.
Uh, so any butter that would be within the.
Oh, sure.
The elements of that, they wouldn't be able to come in, the public hearing in South Berwick, they'd be notified, they're gonna have to do another mailing anyway.
And if and when you find the preliminary plan application complete, there would be another public hearing then to.
So, and, and I guess one of my concerns is, um, I think, as I remember the discussion, and maybe, once again, I don't remember this as well as I should have, but. One of our concerns was that the main way into this project was going to be off route four, and that industrial drive would be used, and it would ease the burden of having lots of traffic come through. The other two phase developments, um, but you know, I've seen industrial drive, and I really wouldn't want to drive down there very much, or have that be the entry to my house, I'm just wondering, will there be any improvements made to make it sort of, you know, well?
So that's not a question for Mr. Wood, that's a question for the town of Berwick, they control that road, and they have a very strict road standard, I can tell you that. Um, and they would have to come up with the actual standards to be put on the findings, the fact of that, again, that's why you're gonna vote to send a letter.
Where, where, where's the break in the property, where is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you show that?
Right up, right up to the cul-de-sac, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Oh, it's that, or I thought it was much further.
There were, yeah, there were a lot of concerns about through traffic, and so, if I heard you correctly, you did do a traffic analysis.
I believe we submitted.
Yeah, and then, and so you did that, but no, we should notify Berwick. Whatever they choose to do, they can tell us whatever they want to tell us, and then they will gauge to the level, what are you gonna do?
I would assume if you have a joint, if Berwick opts in for the joint meeting, that the traffic analysis and a letter, and I probably have a traffic engineer here, Diane Morville, would probably be one of the main topics of the conversation.
Yeah. So would we, we, we wouldn't want to invite them into the public, we would want to have a separate meeting with them.
They're, have their own public hearing on it.
Well, I don't, we're, we're required, I, I'm just thinking process here, within thirty days of approval of the sketch plan, we're supposed to have a public hearing. We can say the first meeting in January, right? And we invite the public in to comment about this, but. That does not seem like the appropriate forum in which to have a discussion with the town of Berwick. So would we want to have a public hearing prior, and then a meeting, if they opt in, they could tell us, hey. For all we know, put a gate there, and we're good to go, I don't know what they're gonna say, you know? So process, what's the process, how do we, we'll send them a letter, we can invite them to a meeting. Uh, but that should probably not, I just want to be clear, not part of the public hearing, should it be before the public hearing?
So here's what you should do.
Yeah.
So, go send a letter to the town of Berwick, okay? And then they'll receive the, the letter will be up tomorrow, and they'll receive the letter, the next planning board meeting, pre-visiting, right, for.
Right.
So that's what they, we're hoping that they're going to, you know what I mean, approve to come back.
Well, when is our, wait, we not have a second one?
We wanted to give them enough notice and.
Good, well, I get it.
Yeah, so. We would hope that the planning board, you guys can approve this sketch or not, that's up to you, but then, we're just gonna ask that you table the application until we hear back from Berwick.
Then would we get a notice? If we.
Every day back.
Yeah, we get thirty days after that.
Yeah, and then, so if, then we have a joint meeting with Berwick, if they should come, or if they just send a letter. Um, and then, from there, we could schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we're possibly looking at the, the second meeting of January, I have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Could possibly, if anyone's to allow the first meeting.
Right. And provided we get input, if anything, from Berwick, okay? Yeah, they took the liberty, they asked if they could draft the letter to go for it.
Like, we're already on the way, so that's fine, okay.
So.
My guess is you're gonna probably rescind the letter from that.
Yeah. So I think there's kind of, uh. Three avenues tonight, and, you know, please weigh in on if we're not. If we're missing something. Do we want to go conventional, or do we want to go cluster? Would be kind of one of the first decisions we would need to make. And then the second decision would need to be to, uh, table the application and send a letter to the town of Berwick. Right?
That would be to approve the sketch plan, or if you decide on the cluster.
Yeah, I mean, do you want, I think this gentleman, or did you want to hold off and wait for Berwick altogether?
So.
That may not be a bad idea.
To keep this clean, um, I reached out to SMPDC and asked this very question, and their recommendations and my recommendations to the board is to send the letter to Berwick and table the application with no formal approvals.
Yeah.
And that keeps them in the know, we can receive that letter back, then we don't have our time limit of holding that public hearing. We'll receive the letter back probably fairly quickly from them, to see if they want to be involved or not, we'll put Mr. Wood right back on the agenda for the very next meeting after we receive that. And then we can go from there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
A little bit to think about.
Sure.
Question, so. You listed, if we send out the letter tomorrow, we get the thing back, first part of next week, we can still add them to the twenty-first, if we, if, if that was the decision.
Yes.
On the twenty-first, approve the sketch plan, per se, so, and then set the proper caring.
We would want to within here from, here from the town of Berwick and incorporate any conversation or concerns, or they may, they may throw a bomb on this. If. Have you looked, have you looked at Berwick to understand what impacts might be here? Have you given that any consideration?
Well, we've done a lot of work in Broke, and I've looked at the ordinance, first, if the twenty-first is too tight. We would not mind going until January, that's not a concern.
If Berwick wants to be involved.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
If Berwick wants to be involved, we didn't give them that as a date, so if they table this and they send the letter, okay? And they say, hey, we'll come to the January fourth meeting, that's when you'll be on the agenda next.
More than agreeable.
If they send a letter stating, I already know what they're probably gonna say, if they send the letter that I think they're gonna send, you will be on the twenty-first agenda. Okay, but I, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Understand, I realize it's Christmas and people, yeah, I, I didn't want you to feel that we are asking for the twenty-first.
I'm a Jew. I'll be here Christmas Day, signed by me.
I mean, we've done a number of projects in Berwick, we certainly know the Berwick. The last, the last project that we did that involved both Berwick and South Berwick was Outlook. Well, of course. Timmy Flynn was client number two, I've had him as a client since nineteen eighty-nine, and when we did Outlook, remember, it was a little tricky, because the clubhouse. Half of it is in Berwick, and half is in South Berwick, and back then, South Berwick was a dry town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can only drink on one side of the building.
You could, we, we had a divide up, but then by the time the project was filled, the, the, the joint, the joint review worked pretty well in that case.
So I think what the, the, the best thing to do at this point would be to essentially ask for a motion to table this application. And send a letter to the town of Berwick, inviting them in to review, or to the extent they deem practical, uh, yeah, and request a meeting with them, and we'll await their response. If their response is whatever, we'll take it under advisement, and we'll incorporate it or not, depending on what they tell us. And then, from there, we'll act on the, the, the sketch plan, provided it's nothing. They're gonna say drop a bomb on us, I don't know what that's gonna be, you know, so, I guess that would be a good path tonight to move forward, table the application, send a letter to the town of Berwick.
I make a motion that we table the application, sending a letter to the town of Berwick, um, and a meeting with it.
A second. Okay, now it's been moved, it's been seconded, are there any conversations from those here, and I'll go to, go to Bill, go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna, if I'm remembering correctly, uh, the intention was to turn over the, the road to the town. Um, and then there was some consideration about plowing and things like that, because there's no way to get to there. Uh, with it being a South Berwick Road, without going onto Berwick Roads, and there was some discussion about who would be responsible for plowing and things like that, so I don't know if that's appropriate at this level. But it's certainly something that I think needed to be discussed with Berwick, in terms of public maintenance and public works and stuff like that.
Bill, I, I agree with you, and actually, I do remember part of that conversation now that you mentioned. Uh, so all the more reason to meet with Berwick and have that conversation with them, uh, and I think when we get to the preliminary stage, we'd have more of those in-depth conversations with. In this case, our own public works, but also Berwick wants to continue and move on in the process, whether or without us, we'll have to have that conversation with them too.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that got captured in, in the, you know, points of discussion that we need to have with them.
So, you know, we're probably gonna want to see some element of a turnaround there for South Berwick. And I don't see that here.
That can easily be added.
Yeah, 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 so, uh, the motion has been made and seconded, and has everybody asked any questions? Do you have any illiterate questions, if not, we'll call a roll call vote, I'm gonna start with Bill.
Aye.
I think we'll go to Zach.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye, and Chris.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes, we're gonna table the applications, send a letter to the town of Berwick, hopefully, we'll hear back from them quick, and get some answers. And I'll be on the agenda again, meeting in, in, uh, in January, with hopefully a public hearing shortly thereafter.
Well, thank you for seeing you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you having a little.
I didn't want to say, you know, we should put it all together very quickly, Jen and Amy did an excellent job, Jen, that was me right away. Um, I know it's a busy time, yes, I appreciate everything, Stan.
Yeah, I appreciate you taking the time to work with us as well.
Oh, I don't see, and everyone have a.
You as well. Okay, uh, so, Board members, moving on, we have a few informational freedom materials that, uh. Be handed out and or discussed, and MS four stormwater study. I'll look to Amy and or Jenny, the.
Wanted you to check it out, came from Christie. And it's, uh. Thing we've always handed out to you guys, so you have it. Nothing to really discuss, other than read it through.
So there's, there's no action here, this isn't in regards to the meeting we had with her several months ago, you know, okay.
Yeah, and, and, um, you know, just to go, moving forward with stormwater, if you ever have any questions, have a good night.
Thank you.
If you have any questions on anything that comes with MS four, um, the new permit, you know, reach out to us, or, or you can reach out to Christie directly, she's always available. A lot of information.
And. The joint town council and planning board workshop, no pun intended. Uh, Anibus and Solar have been rescheduled to January seventeenth at six thirty P M. Okay.
Okay.
So.
Next, I have one comment, Richard, um, December twenty-first, that is in your review as a board to decide if you want to. Continue with that meeting, obviously, means, meaning it's, but, um, as of right now, we have nothing other than approval of minutes.
I would be fully canceled.
Unless, unless something comes up that we have to act on, I'm fine with pushing that off.
Yeah, we just have to.
Yeah.
Go the line.
Yeah.
Perfect, and that, and that's, we did it last year.
Yeah, no, I'm fine, does anybody have any issues again, unless something is put forward that requires us to act in a certain amount of time? I'm in no hurry.
I have only one question, and that's, are we gonna hear back about the MMA training?
Yes.
Next week?
I don't make sure.
And that's via email, okay.
I will, I'll reach out tomorrow, you know, midday to find out why this, you didn't get the link, maybe the link's not gonna come until like twenty-four hours before the, the workshop starts.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, I'm signing Hersia, so. No, exact same thing, they, they do hold those, uh, every, every three months, I think, sometimes Zoom, sometimes they do it.
Our point slide I got.
Again, it's just, you don't need to. And we, Jenny and I will always be on top of, um, we're on their list to always know if anything's coming down the line, ahead of time for any workshop, and sometimes, because I always will want to.
I mean, if there's anything on Elite two thousand and three updates.
We don't know yet. And you made a comment that, um, the state of Maine was looking to get some sort of funding set through for some of the municipality. For their staffing, you know, for the, the extra cost of, um, working through this. So, a lot of the towns and municipalities start their budgets, and they have to go. So, a lot of the towns and municipalities start their budgets, and they have to go to meetings by March, April of next year. And so, at that, what point do you, the state finally say, you know, we might have to push this back a little? So, we might see that July first may not be the date, so maybe push a little bit.
Well, also, I mean, from what I hear, the legislature is playing, putting on some amendments to it.
I'm sure they are.
It's not, it's not really, it's sort of very.
Yeah.
Fluid right now.
It's extremely.
Before we launch into even, we can't really do anything.
If towns can't make their budget line work without knowing what the. Extra coming from the state's gonna be, then. They'll, they'll just wait after.
Okay.
Amy, is there, is there still time to get in on that meeting, or is it too late, or the, the M N A training?
You missed it by like three minutes.
Alright, fair enough, I'll get the next one.
No, of course, I, I, I'm glad that you asked, cause I, I was gonna reach out to you tomorrow, so you're all set, I'll get you on tomorrow.
Thank you.
Are there any member comments before we move to? Oh, the comments.
I'm all set.
We've moved to second and all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate you.
Thank you.